All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Benson?
Here.
Eckhart? Fisher?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Milton? Miller?
Here.
Stone? Valencia?
Here.
Item number four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18, 2016, and approval of claims in the amount of $206,351.55, and payroll expenses of $73,158.94. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Here.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right. Item number six, Reports from Boards and Officers. First item, A, Parks and Building Meeting from 7/18/2016.
The committee mad probably the main discussion regarding the use of the new fogger that was purchased by the community back from the city. The committee asked Joe Don to permit the use of the fogger going throughout the city at one time, which would be occurring this week. We'll be kind of monitoring the mosquito population after that and determining whether another treatment is good, the chemical lasts about a month. That is the basis, and we'll be monitoring that. We also asked the city manager to develop memorandums of understanding with public schools, Northwestern, and Northeast Technologies Center for them to be able to request with the city, fog areas around their campuses prior to special events.
I would add that we did start that this morning, and based on, we weren't sure how long it was going to take us to get through the community. Started this morning, we figure we'll finish tomorrow.
Council have any questions for Mr. Valencia or Mr. Dunham? Alva Rine Authority Meeting from July 26, 2016.
I have not seen minutes of this meeting, and I was not able to attend the meeting. Looks like it was a pretty routine type of meeting. They did discuss some design, some complex designs, and potential site developments. I know that I did, with our representative, I did have a email conversation about some sites other than where the fairgrounds is located now. Based on regulations, I don't know that either one of those sites, the site that we were discussing, which would have been on the southeast corner of the airport, is going to be conducive for that. And I don't know that that would be something that they would pursue at this point. But I did have a conversation with him about that, and that would be all that I would have to report on for the Rine Authority.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you, Joe Don. Alva Hospital Authority Meeting from July 26, 2016. Dr. Haniford?
Pretty routine and quick being, other than some predispelling, some reappointments and appointments of staff. We approved policies and procedures for the ER, cardio-pulmonary, and telemedicine, telehospitalist policies and procedures. We approved BKD to do the audit for the Sherr Medical Center, which I believe they're beginning this month. Our new doctor, Dr. Lawrence, will begin to see patients on the 11th of August. And this positive conversation, we started with another family practice doctor. Other than that, that was my...
Council have any questions for Dr. Haniford? Thank you, Bo. Finance Committee Report from August 1, 2016. Councilman Miller?
The Finance Committee meeting this evening was a little bit short. We're pretty quick through the purchase orders and claims, review of cash and investments. We have multiple investments that are maturing that we'll be reinvesting. And we had a, we have a meeting on Wednesday with the Bank of Oklahoma to discuss the financing of some future projects. Discussion around the water meters. We've had our first couple of months of new water meters, and we're starting to see the benefits of those, as well as the restructuring of the rates. So if anybody's got questions on that, Joe Don can take them. That was it for the finance.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Wes.
Mayor's Report, probably, and then there's a couple items on this agenda, but getting appointees wrapped up for vacant positions on boards and commissions. Also, worked with Joe Don and Dr. Decker on the wayfinding signage products, projects that were also on this agenda. And then gave an address to the Tourism Commission at their last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
City Business Manager Report.
Well, first of all, I would like to take a few moments and recognize our new EMS director, Marty Graham. This is his first official day full-time. He's been part-time with us. He's been working at the Woodward EMS and dispatch and... And as a paramedic. He does have a paramedic licensure. To get the opportunity, welcome Marty to our wonderful family.
I hope to continue what Chad was developing along, see the service grow. I got my basic PFT through that, those access to here in Alba. Kind of need to make a full circle back around Alba. After spending a couple years in Denver, so the Florida Department of SCI has paid me questions, I'll have to take color.
Thank you, Marty.
Couple of things that we do, a couple of projects we do have going on. We've got two airport projects that are awaiting airport board decision. One is the construction of T hangars, and the other is repair of the South Sherr Hangar. For the T hangars, we received four bids ranging in price from $131,150 to $305,323 for construction of the building and for the purchase of the building, doors, and erection of the building. For the South Sherr Hangar repairs, there were only two bidders for the, well, there were only two bidders for the construction of that bill, of the, of the hangar, of the hangars at $53,000 and $60,000. So low bid could possibly be for construction and purchase of the building at $184,000. South Sherr Hangar, there was only one bidder, and this bid was $50,355. Both these items will be considered on the August 8 airport board meeting. Wanted to update the board on some building issues. We're having some, we're experiencing numerous equipment issues recently. A lot of the pickups, our primary problems have been pickups and refuge trucks, and this is to deal with age issues primarily, not abuse. Most of these vehicles that we're looking at are in excess of 20 years old. There's just a lot of age on those, on those equipment, that equipment. There, wanted to report on some vandalism that had happened up at the cemetery recently. We have discovered, we had discovered a few weeks back, somebody had put sugar in the gas tanks of our weed eaters and our lawnmowers. We did find this out before we had any major damage done to either one of these equipments. We got, we got the lawnmowers cleaned out, and the weed eaters cleaned out, got new gas in them, got all that taken care of. But it did take, put us a little bit behind on our mowing. But as of today's report from the department head, I think we were just about complete. There may be a little, there may have been, as of this morning, there may have been a little bit of weed eating we need to do. But for the most part, we had caught back up. Few other things. We did have some issues at the swimming pool Friday. Somebody had defecated in the swimming pool, and we have been going through a sanitation process as required by the Health Department and the Center for Disease Control since then. Pool is slated to be opened tomorrow morning, tomorrow at its regular time right now. Planning Commission, I did get some questions in for Integris, to submit to Integris for their permit so that the Planning Commission can meet and respond back and make a recommendation back to this board. We will be submitting that to Integris, those questions to Integris within the week. Friday was the last day for submission. I'll get them compiled and get them sent to Integris. We'll see how long it takes them to respond back to us. On August 9, the city is going to be having a free health exam for the employees. It's a biometric exam for employees and their families at the rec center. So if you see a lot of cars out there, that's what that's about on the, on the 9. This is going to be, this exam, I've had some real good experience with it in the past, where we've actually found people that, I mean, we've, it saved lives. People, and it's been a really good deal. It's at no cost to the employees or to the city. So we're looking forward to that. One of the things that I did neglect to mention in the Finance Committee meeting that I needed to kind of report on is that we are going to be looking for a new auditor. Last week, I did receive a, or two weeks ago, I received notification from our current auditor, then he told us we had just, he's a one-man office, and we'd just outgrown And he wasn't going to be able to perform our audit anymore. I did send letters out to about 10 different auditing firms throughout the state. I've had some, I've had some conversations back with at least one of them. Do expect to get those quotes in relatively quickly. And mayor and council, that would be my report. I'd be happy to answer, try to answer any questions you may have.
Joe Don, from, the street could be able to get 14th Street resurfaced before, as far as...
That is the plan, yes. We did run into some difficulties up on Young Street. Rain. The work that was required to do that street was more than what we were expecting. From Thunderbird to Sunset, we actually had to, that's actually a, not a two-inch overlay, but a four-inch, because there wasn't a base. We've taken about a foot of crown, of asphalt off the crown of that street, and reprofiling it today, should be, should be refinishing that today. But we do expect that before we get to school in session, we should finish 14th Street. We won't get around some of the other schools before then, like we were hoping to, but we would be able to get off of, get down 14th Street. If, to give you an idea of what, how much asphalt we've taken off of Young Street, we've got it, the pile of asphalt millings that's up at the rec center right now came off of Young Street. And it's a substantial pile. But we do anticipate that we can get through Young Street, get through 14th Street before school.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you. Item seven is Discussion and Action on Resolution Number 2016-006, approving the project agreement between the City of Alva and Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the installation of wayfinding signage in the City of Alva. I'll let Joe Don get into the details of the resolution, but this is a project which has received some funding through Tourism Commission, and essentially, it is geared towards driving visitors, giving them directions to our downtown economic districts and retailers. This is one phase of a multi-phase plan, and Joe Don, I'd like you to talk about the details of what our resolution needs to be with ODOT.
Well, our, the resolution basically says that we are, is approving the agreement between the City of Alva and ODOT. The agreement is that once the wayfinding signage is erected along Highway 281 and 64, that we, the city, will be responsible for the maintenance of those signs. We will be responsible for any repairs to those signs. If they become worn or need to be replaced, they're our responsibility. It's not ODOT's responsibility. And in jest, that's what the agreement is about. If there's any materials needed for these signs or anything else, it's our responsibility to take that on. And that would be the, the jest of being able to put those signs in ODOT right of way. Right now, we are talking about four signs. Got a couple of them on Oklahoma Boulevard, and we've got one down on 64, maybe two down on 64 that I'm aware of, coming into town.
Those are the ones with regard to ODOT property. We, there'll also be a handful...
Yeah, there's, there's six or eight that are going to be going in within the City of Alva along, along college, directing, directing folks downtown.
So the initial cost is covered by the grant money we've got?
Yeah. That's either been taken care of for the purchase of signs, has either been taken care of through Freedom West, through grants that they have received, or they did receive some tourism funding to pay for that also.
It was a project that was researched quite a bit. They had a national design firm plot out at, you know, and make recommendations for what type of signage to go where in our community, and that, this is, I guess, part of the first steps to getting the signs put up.
Is there a design or a...
Yes.
Yes, there is. And, I mean, actually, I, we can...
Hold on. Do you have it?
Yeah, I've got. That is, that was the deal, though, that all the signs were prepared the same. They even contact, they've even been out to the, excuse me, airport to see about replacing their signage. But all the signs will look like these. Yeah, we can get the one out of your office. Tim, would you mind helping there? We do have one type that, one of them here.
It will replace it current?
The ODOT ones will.
It will replace a...
Is it actually one you'd like for that field park or...
No, no.
The committee would like for, as signs deteriorate and need to be replaced, that they come on board with, with consistent options.
But yeah, any of the signs that have been done through leadership groups that won't be replaced immediately, it would be replaced, yeah, there is a possibility of being replaced sometime in the future, but, but that's, that is one of the signs.
They'll go on a black cast pole sleeve type thing. Look pretty sharp. I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 2016-006, approving the project agreement between the City of Alva and Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the installation of wayfinding signage in the City of Alva. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Valencia, second by Councilman Miller, to approve Resolution 2016-006 for a project agreement between the City of Alva and Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the installation of wayfinding signage in the City of Alva. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item eight is Discussion and Action on the Appointment of Jeff Cohen to the Alva Board of Adjustment for a three-year term ending in June 2019. Paul on visiting with Terry Turner, who had held that position. He was not interested in renewing for another turn, term. We do thank Terry for his service, have talked to Jeff Cohen, and he is, I think he has a background that'll lend itself well to this Board of Adjustments, and he is willing to serve in that capacity. So I recommend appointment of Jeff Cohen to the Alva Board of Adjustment.
I have a motion to approve appointment of Jeff Cohen to the Alva Board of Adjustment for a three-year term ending in June 2019. Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, second by Mr. Benson, to appoint Jeff Cohen to the Alva Board of Adjustment for a three-year term ending in June 2019. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Item nine is Discussion and Action on the Appointment of Lynn A. Chafee to the Alva Cemetery Board for a six-year term ending in June 2022. Margaret Barton had held that position and had asked to have a replacement appointed after her term was fulfilled, and I have discussed with former mayor Chafee, and he is, this is a board that he has an interest in and has, you know, done some things with other cemetery events and projects in the past, with or without being mayor. And I would recommend his appointment to the cemetery board.
Move to approve Lynn A. Chafee to the Cemetery Board for a six-year term ending in June 2022. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Valencia, to appoint Lynn A. Chafee to the Alva Cemetery Board for a six-year term ending in June 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item 10 is Discussion and Action on Application from Terry Johanna Curtis to Withdraw Retirement Funds from City Pension Plan in a Lump Sum.
Ms. Curtis worked for us back when we operated the Homestead. She subsequently went and worked for Sherr, and then later left the hospital, I guess. And she never withdrew her pension, her retirement funds out of our retirement plan. And based upon our plan documents, this, is required that the council vote to acknowledge this withdrawal of funds. The withdrawal of these funds will eliminate any future obligation the city pension plan does have with Ms. Curtis. It will not have any, will not have a negative financial impact upon the City of Alva's retirement plan. The payment made to Ms. Curtis will come directly from OMRF, and will be funds that are available for her and to her that she had contributed to the pension. I'd recommend that we, we acknowledge this lump sum withdrawal.
Is there a motion to acknowledge this application for withdrawal?
Motion to acknowledge the application from Terry Johanna Curtis to withdraw retirement funds from the city pension plan in a lump sum. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Haniford, to acknowledge application from Terry Johanna Curtis to withdraw retirement funds from the city pension plan in a lump sum. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item 11 is Discussion and Action on the Employee Developed Vision and Mission Statement. Joe Don?
Well, this kind of, this started with the stability test that we did, and the council, board members, and employees were given a few months back. During this process, we discovered that the City of Alva employees didn't have a written or approved vision or mission statement. The departments were working toward individual goals, but there was not a unified vision or goal for the employees in the City of Alva. The employees were asked, and we had 12 employees, basically one from each department, volunteer to help develop this, this vision, mission statement. The group met at least three different occasions to brainstorm and come up with the proposed vision and mission statement. We have several of those committee members in the room with us today. If any of them would like to comment on the process, how they felt it was, they would like to comment on the development of the plan, of the vision and the mission statement that they have come up with, I'd be happy to let any of them speak that wanted to speak. We've got several representatives. I mean, I really commend these employees for the work that they put into this. I mean, I really commend these employees for the work that they put into this. It was, they did take it seriously. It wasn't something that they just said, hey, I'm going to go just through, it's not something they just threw together. I think it's, I think it's a state, a couple of statements that we can be proud of. I also think that it is something that we utilize throughout our, throughout our city websites, throughout our documentation that we send out, and the way we kind of evaluate what, the way, the way we do business. I think they're both very good statements and I'd recommend the council approve them. And I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions, although I was not involved in the meetings. I wanted it to be from the employees. I'm sure that there's employees here that can answer any questions that you may have, if you've got any.
There be a motion or further discussion on the vision and mission statement?
I have approval of the employee developed vision and mission statement in the City of Alva.
I have a motion by Councilman Valencia, second by Dr. Haniford, to, was it you? Second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the employee developed vision and mission statement. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item 12 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Any citizens wishing to make a comment, question for the council, may stand and state their name and we will allot two minutes per speaker, if you have any questions or statements you'd like to share. Well, thank you for, all for being here. Remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members have any?
Joe Don, I just want to commend the employees that worked on the vision and mission statements for their work. I congratulate them and thank them for that.
It's well deserved. These are the guys that put it together. They're the ones that deserve the thanks.
And gals.
And gals.
I appreciate you coming in tonight in case any of us had any questions. I liked the vision and mission statement, both.
All right. If there are no other inquiries by council members or comments, we will adjourn the city council meeting. Thank you all.